I always take up your space.
All right, let's call this meeting to order. Welcome everybody to our special meeting study session for tonight, April the eighth, two thousand twenty four. For the record, all members of council are here with the exception of Councilor Beeler and Councilor Ripley, who have both requested an excused absence this evening. If there's no objection, we'll give them an excused absence. Seeing none, they are excused. And city staff are present and accounted for, the exception of Chief Holbrook, who is not feeling well today. So we will. We have been excused as well. All right, first item to discuss this evening is our Sunnyside Municipal Court Staff Introduction. Meet Sunnyside Municipal Court Judge Troy Lee and Court Administrator Vanessa Enquist. And I must say, I feel a little bit bad because judge has been serving on the bench here for a while, and I even know some of his associates, and we have never formally introduced him here before council. And that was, uh, that was an oversight on our part. So sir, I apologize, Vanessa. We've met you in a couple of different occasions, but you had to be formally introduced in your position. Want to welcome you this evening. I don't know if you want to say a little bit about yourselves or? You may.
I guess I haven't met some of you before, but I'm being a municipal court judge. I was appointed two thousand twenty-two, February two thousand twenty-two to replace the Judge Michaels that had been here quite a while. My, I'm an attorney from Yakima. I've been doing this since I graduated from law school in two thousand. So I've been around quite a while in this, in this area. The, um, I guess what I usually tell people is, like, I have an open door policy, and so I have business cards if anybody wants a business card, but as interim city manager Layman can say, if somebody has an issue, I'd just like to address it right away. Give me a call. I mean, I think that's a better thing than having eight meetings to figure out. All it took was somebody coming in, asking one question, and yeah, that works. And so that's, that's always been my thing. Um, so if anybody has an issue or questions about the court, um, myself, Ms. Enquist also is always available. Um, she's very personable, so. Evening. Um, if anybody has any questions for me, I know, I know this was kind of a meet and greet and.
Okay, any questions for the new, for the judge?
I'm on New City Council, but like I said, if anybody, if anything, anybody has any issues, anybody has any questions? Just tell me.
Good, Deputy Mayor.
What kind of challenges are you seeing in, you know, in the court today?
Uh, same stuff as in the legal system. Attracting attorneys, there's caseload limits with the criminal cases that we all have to worry about. Everywhere, mental health is an issue. Everywhere, drug use is an issue. You see it in, in Sunnyside, you see it in Toponish, which we, we do the Toponish cases as well. Uh, you see it in Yakima. It's been no different. I think it's, it's more prevalent now with, um, with fentanyl. Tightening things. It's security, I suppose, is always a concern. It's crime. You're, you're always seeing crime. I think you're seeing a little bit more serious crime down here than you used to in years past, which I guess thankfully, we don't have to deal with. We deal with the misdemeanors, but we kind of see the, the fallout of that. That's big things. Nothing, nothing new, nothing that I obviously haven't been dealing with for years, but.
Ms. Prost, you sound like you had a question?
Yeah, I have two. Uh, what are your office hours? Is your office here? Uh, if, if we have any questions to come in, or even for the public to come in, if they have any questions for you?
I don't maintain regular office hours, so we do court. Uh, now we do court twice a week. I got it down to twice a week, so I'm usually here for court. Um, I'm usually available, which is why I have cards. I have a business phone.
Okay. What day is our, our courts here?
Uh, all day Tuesday afternoon and then Thursday mornings.
Okay.
And then if there's jury trials, Wednesdays. Or if there's some, and if there's something special set, I keep adding to this, but if there's something special set, could be a different day.
Okay. And my second question, um, is, uh, Judge, uh, what has, uh, well, what has been your previous experience with maybe the communicate, the, the line communications between you and council? And is there anything that, you know, that, that we can help and support with that maybe hasn't happened before? Um, or anything that you would like us to lean in and just kind of formulate? I think for me, relationship building, especially working relationships is really important, so um, establishing some sort of cadence or check-ins or, um, I know some of our public here doesn't know you, so even having introduced you to, to the public, um, you know, if it doesn't happen today, maybe at another moment, but um, just wanted to get your thoughts on that.
It's important for the municipal court to have good relations with city council. I mean, I guess any, you know, any attorneys. This is the first I've met some of you. Um, I'm always open to addressing city council. Um, again, my, what I've seen over the years is just addressing issues really fast, and even if it's a one-on-one thing, very easy to figure out. Um, I, I kind of have the, I, I never want to make mountains out of molehills. And so if I have an issue or if something comes up, then I just address it as well. I do the same thing with people. Also, you don't want to have things fester, so you don't want to have bad relations with city council. You don't want to have bad relations with the court. Obviously, you don't want to have bad relations with anybody you're doing business with in Sunnyside, as well as the general public, and so um, the faster things get addressed, the better.
I'm sorry.
One of the things that, uh, is I'm always reminded of is that there's three branches of government. And you're the judicial. And we, in respect are, are, um, not only the legislative, but the city, city managers are, the city count, the city hall is sort of the administrative. So what you do in your courts is really pretty much independent of what we do. With the exception, with the exception, we have to follow state laws regarding, you know, some things with sentencing or, uh, maybe even fines, that sort of thing. But generally speaking, our, our job is to let you do your job.
Right, and it, and it's period to hear that. I know that you go to any judicial trainings, judicial colleges. They'll talk about, oh, you have to educate city council when new members come in. And I kind of get that. We're very distinct. We're very neutral. At the end of the day, yes, we can't have it where city council or any of the administrative positions tell us what to do, how to do it, um, because.
It's not like we are going to call you and say, can you fix this ticket for me?
Right.
Because that would be bad.
Yeah, we'll quickly draw the ire of AOC Administrative Office of the Courts.
And probably a whole mess of other folks.
But I get it too. I, I mean, you know, you say that as a court, like, oh, no, we have to do our own thing, but then if there's budget issues, sure, it's, you kind of.
That is our.
Yeah, yep.
We all do kind of overlap.
Then you have city council say, well, you don't let us get involved, so you figure stuff out. Just can't work that way nowadays.
We do have to give you money, or I give you money, so.
And speaking of other issues, there's a lot of constraints with being able to recoup costs. Now we're in a situation where we, you know, most of the time, we cannot get court fines, we can't get court fees. When infractions are down, frankly, there's rules relating to that, that years ago, um, there was a thing where if somebody didn't pay infraction fines, couldn't be suspended, couldn't do anything, so then you saw kind of a downward turn of even people paying on infractions anymore. Um, if you ever look at the, the revenue stream for Sunnyside with the courts, it's gone way down, and that's why. And that's just the position we're in.
Mr. Come on.
Yeah, and, and I know that with Olympia, you know, banging up laws and, and they don't support the local, you know, courts with finance, you know, financing of, of those laws. Is there anything, any SMC ordinances that I guess are getting in the way of, of, of Sunnyside Court that we could help, you know, amend? Or change?
Not really. I mean, most the Sunnyside Municipal Code, at least the criminal code, a lot of it is based upon the RCWs. You know, you have to understand too, with infractions, most infractions, wh- when we're dealing with this and we're getting revenue in, eighty-eight percent of that goes to the state. Infraction, so the state's taking most of the money anyways, and it's, yeah, it is very disheartening when then the state turns around and says, we can't help you with defense costs. We can't help these jurisdictions. They're taking all of the money, so, uh, it's that's obviously budget is for you guys to decide, but it's okay, it's hard to deal with.
Yeah, how long have you been a judge and have you been able to serve or work for any other surrounding cities around here?
So I started pro temming as a judge. Oh, probably two thousand nineteen, yeah, two thousand nineteen in Seela. Um, I did Granger a little bit. I started pro temming here also in two thousand nineteen. Um, and then pro temming for Judge Michaels and was doing that for a couple of years, and then when he left the bench, then I was appointed.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Well, thank you, sir. Yeah, it's good to hear a little bit about you. Um, you know, I kind of stepped back during the process because I, I happened to know someone in your office and thought I didn't want to unduly influence things one way or the other. I thought it better to, to step out of the picture just a little bit, and so I did that, and so, but yeah, I have not heard anything negative about you, no complaints whatsoever. Everybody seems to be very happy with what you're doing, so I'm glad that you're here and thank you for your work. And, um, Ms. Enquist, I don't know if you want to say a little bit about yourself or?
So, um, I'm Vanessa Enquist. I am the Court Administrator. I have been here for, going on six years in August. Before that, I was the Court Administrator for the City of Seela. And I worked four years at the Akma County District Court there. So my knowledge base is quite extensive. I do have a passion for Sunnyside. I grew up here. I was also raised in Toponish as well. So being able to serve in both of those courts that I grew up in is something not everybody has an opportunity to partake in. So anybody needs any additional information, any assistance, quite like Judge, I'm open to meeting with everybody. I think I've been trying my hardest to collaborate with all the departments we work with. So that doesn't just stop within this building or the ones we immediately work with. It extends out to anybody else we can help provide services for. And also Judge didn't mention, we do have a Law Day coming up May first, so that'll give additional information on the other departments we work with. The separation of judicial, legislative, and executive branch, if anybody would like additional information on that, that will be May first here, six P M.
Thank you for that. And I know you've been very visible on our public forums and different events, uh, that we've had over at the community center, so I appreciate you're willing to participate on that level as well, so. Thank you for that. And with that, we're going to continue. You guys are excused unless you want to sit here and enjoy the rest of this meeting with us. Um, probably won't be the most exciting part of your evening, but you're welcome to be here.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here tonight, you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. Nice to meet you.
Thank you.
All right, next item. And again, we have to keep an eye on the time because we've only got this, this up until six thirty when we start our next meeting, so we'll try to keep things moving this evening. Item B is the American Rescue Plan Act. The Funds Commitment Update. Discuss approving a resolution authorizing the commitment and expenditure of funds from the American Rescue Plan Act. If you remember, council, this is what we talked about in our last, uh, special meeting. And so beef.
Turn this over to Ms. Warner.
Ms. Warner.
And, um, this is just, the cover sheet here just sort of, um, summarizes the changes that you made to the existing programs that were established in two thousand twenty-two, um, where we just reallocated some of those funds. So what you see in the left column is the total allocation, which accounts for all of our ARPA money. And the right side column is everything we have left to spend. So, um, the next page of that, I believe, it should be there, shows the, oh, just after the, yep. Shows the breakdown of some of those changes made. So that you can see the remaining allocation portion there for each one of those plans.
I have a question.
Sure.
I, I thought we removed the staffing for future.
Well, we, we removed it after the amount that it was originally approved for. You wanted it to stop at the cap amount. So that's, that's the remainder of that.
That's the number right there. Right?
Right, so all that's listed there is that remaining amount to get up to that one point two million that was initially approved.
Okay, very good. Questions or comments for Ms. Warner?
Yeah, all of these are, these are all up to date.
Yes, this, well, I mean, um, it doesn't show like any purchases between the last time we met, a week ago and today. I haven't gotten that last week up to date. But, um, it's up to date. Yeah, I mean, it's, there's, it hasn't been any changes since then. And when we do the budget amendment at the next meeting, there will be some items that are listed here that you'll see in that budget amendment. Because some of the funds were part of the capital projects that we had initially slated to see if we were going to spend it at the end of two thousand twenty-three. So you'll see some of those being moved to two thousand twenty-four, and then just a couple line item changes as we kind of re allocated some money around. Um, so you'll see some of that, but it'll all just be reflective of this.
Deputy Mayor.
Um, I know we're supposed to have a contract in place by the end of this year, correct?
June?
No, in December.
For the money needs to be under contract, yeah, or extended.
Uh, have we talked to the leads about that being able to happen? Are we getting?
Yeah, I, leadership has met several times and we are, are working really hard, yeah, to make sure that we get those. We are going to continue reevaluating them and making sure that we are staying on track so that we can communicate that with you guys. If it seems like something is not going to happen, that we can relook at how we're going to do that money, um, to make any changes, but we'll keep you apprised of it, um, as it comes.
There's one that I was kind of concerned. I think it's the abatement one. Where's it at? I try. The abatement, I think.
Oh, the abatement fund.
Yeah, are we able, I know with, are we, do we have enough? Homes to abate or?
Yeah, there's, there's quite a list that we have going on right now. Um, I think on the, I'm not going to go through the addresses, but we have about fourteen houses that uh, we need to talk.
Be able to cover.
Yeah, right now, so far this year that we're kind of in the works.
Yeah, all right, thank you.
And if that's the one that I'm kind of keeping my eye on too, because it's not like a, a defined program that we know we, we can order a purchase for or something. Um, so Trevor and I will stay in contact and kind of as we move through these, um, and, and then they move through our, the court system as well. So as we kind of get through the process, we'll get better information on all of those.
Point to bring up with that, sir. It's also one of the few aspects of this, which legally we can recoup costs for abatement and often do. And so we're seeing that now for the first time, I think, in about five years. We're actually covering what was going on at this point through the court awards.
Okay.
Okay, further questions? Okay, so.
Actually, I have a one.
Go ahead, Ms. Rostow.
Um, are, are we going to get updates in the case that this is moving along and where we kind of run into a stumble, like we might not be able to spend this, so let's redirect.
When I met with the Finance, um, or the Administrative Services Subcommittee, they did request, um, which was Counselor Vasquez, uh, Deputy Mayor Galván, and Counselor Ripley. They did request to get more often updates on this, so I'm going to try to give this an update to you guys at the first meeting of every month. That's just like really up to date with everything. Um, that will definitely be my attempt, so you guys can really keep track of that. Thank you.
I think we would all appreciate that, so thank you for that. Further questions? All right, so that will come before us in the regular meeting as a resolution. The next item is the Proclamations. The way we have our proclamation set up, we will need to pass a resolution before, uh, reading each one of them. So we've got the two that we said on, on the last, in our last special meeting, Sexual Assault Awareness Month Proclamation. We're going to, we need to discuss approving a resolution proclaiming April two thousand twenty-four as Sexual Assault Awareness Month in the City of Sunnyside. And I don't know, Mr. City Manager, Chief, if you have anything to say about that or?
I don't. This is just, uh, what you folks discussed at the, at the last meeting and, uh, one of the two that you decided on that would come from this body rather than the public.
Guys, are there any questions or comments to be made on this, Mrs. Hart?
I do have one on the Sexual Assault Awareness Month, um, proclamation. That normally comes from the Lighthouse, uh, Crisis and Support Services over there. It's kind of jumbling up their name, but it is the Lighthouse now. Um, they normally, um, provide one, and I think there's another organization that also does the Volunteer Week proclamation. Well, uh, just a quick point of order, I guess. So if people from the community submit us with proclamations that their organization want to have, maybe it's the union, maybe it's, uh, uh, Fireman's Week or something like that. Do we have to, are we planning, I guess, is the question? Are we planning to have to, um, approve each one as they come up? Is that our plan? Is that what I understood from our, from our last meeting?
That's currently the way it's set up. Yes, we have to, uh, the meeting that the resolution, I mean, the, that the proclamation is being read, then we have to pass a resolution to read that proclamation. So in our regular meeting coming up, we will pass a resolution to read the proclamation, each of these, and then they will be read after that resolution has been passed.
Okay.
Each one individually.
All right, thank you.
And so the same thing should be the case, I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, Madam City Clerk, but when public submits uh, for a proclamation to be read, then council has to approve that. And then it will be read into the record, and typically, an organization that presents a proclamation will provide us with that proclamation written. Um, is that typically the case, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
I guess that's a little unclear on that. Thank you.
Ms. Askus.
Yeah, in regards to Counselor Hart's statement, I actually was able to get in touch with Rosalinda from the Lighthouse. She's actually been in contact with me a few times, um, so I could go take a tour. However, she said that I actually showed her the proclamation. She said that looked great. And I told her to come, and that way she can possibly just be here when we do pass that proclamation. That way she can also share some information in regards of the Lighthouse and some of the events that are coming up.
That would be awesome if she could be here.
Just quickly, is, is Rosalinda, um, Campos, is she the one who is, or I'm sorry, Rubio? Yeah, Rubio. Um, is she, no, it's Alvarez. She's got a lot of names there, there's a whole list. Um, none of them are all hers. I think they're her daughters. I'm getting them confused. But is she working in sexual assault now? Because it was my understanding she was doing domestic violence.
So I'm not sure entirely what she does, but I know that she's at the Lighthouse.
I know she's an advocate there, but she's, I, I'm just, I'm just asking if, oh, she had changed from sexual assault to domestic violence.
So all I know is that she actually reached out to me, extending invitation to the Lighthouse, and she wanted to kind of give me a tour on all, everything that they do. So that was a contact, a relationship that was already established, which is why I reached out to her.
Excellent. That's good.
And there's a copy in Mayor's folder for her of the proclamation.
I think can, awesome. I think that's amazing, um, because I think when we were talking about, uh, when we were deliberating on this, um, the last time during our workshop was that I think we all came to the consensus that we want this to be intentional and have some form of connection with the community versus these becoming transactional, right? Um, and so if, if we can take the extra step, and I know Counselor Vasquez, you already had that established relationship with her, so you reached out, which is perfect. Um, but I think having them in, in the room, I think would definitely, um, I don't know, just be have a little bit more meaning behind this, and then also community can feel like they're being looped into, to these as well. Um, I mean, as much as we can, I know that they're going to be coming through for a vote. Um, but I think the foundation of these of the, of this process is for it to be a meaningful one. Uh, so I appreciate you reaching out to her.
Yeah, no, I think that's awesome. And the one thing to be aware, as, as you made sure that it happened last time, Ms. Froushto, with the Cesar Chavez, was that we are willing to make copies for whichever organization is, is most impacted and will want a copy of that. Um, if somebody wants a copy of a proclamation that benefits their organization, mentions their organization, or adds to their work, not to their work, but to the completion of their mission, we're happy to make sure that they get copies of that, and so those can be distributed as well.
Thank you.
And Mayor?
Yes.
Um, on our website, we have the form that, you know, the public can submit their proclamation, and it is a requirement that if they are submitting it, then someone has to be present to accept their, their proclamation.
Okay. I saw the form. I didn't read it all the way through, apparently. All right, further discussion on item C, Sexual called Awareness, Sexual Assault Awareness Month Proclamation. Okay, then let's move on to item D, National Volunteer Week Proclamation. Discuss approving a resolution proclaiming April twenty-one through twenty-seven, two thousand twenty-four, National Volunteer Week in Sunnyside, Washington. This is another one that we at our last meeting had discussed, and we had picked that one as one that was important to us. Any further discussion on this one?
No, I would just like to share that I went to morning, or not morning, actually noon rotary today. And I extended an invitation to all of them to, I just gave, just giving them a heads up of what we're going to be doing today.
Okay. Yeah, and it is very clear to all of us as council members that, uh, so much of what we do in the city would not be possible without our volunteers. Um, they are incredibly valuable from serving on committees to making events happen such as the skate park or Cinco de Mayo or the lighted parade. Um, all of that stuff happens with volunteers. Nothing would happen without it. We would just be sitting here wondering how we're going to get it all done. So this one is a worthy one. I feel good about that one. Also, I did notice in my reading this week, I can't remember what city. I'm assuming it was Yakima, but, uh, National Volunteer Week is coinciding with, uh, blood drive type thing in Yakima, so um, we might think about that for the future, having something like that available. Sorry, my throat is really scratchy and I'm kind of on the edge. I was on the edge of coming here tonight at all, and so if it gets too bad, I might, uh, turn the regular meeting over to the Deputy Mayor and go home, but, um, I think I'm going to make it through, but I'm going to go through a lot of water, so. It's one of the benefits of having your grandkids over for an entire week and being climbed on by a, a six-year-old and a three-year-old nonstop.
Oh, no.
And I'm moving a little stiff as a result as well, so. All right, so no changes to the, either one of the, uh, proclamations. Everything is good to go? All right. And then our Complete Streets Award. Discuss a resolution authorizing the city manager to accept, accept a funding award from the Washington State Transportation Improvement Board for pedestrian improvements and execute all documents and authorize the city manager to, to execute a task order with HLA Engineering and Land Surveying Incorporated. Chief.
Mr. Sanchez.
Mr. Sanchez.
Yeah. So tonight, yeah, so going back to, uh, February, uh, the Transportation Improvement Board, uh, uh, was taking in applications for, uh, the T I B, um, ADA improvement, uh, program that we were doing, uh, adjacent to the schools and the amount of a million. We ended up, uh, getting awarded five hundred thousand, um, to work on those ADA compliance, um, so the scope of the work is to reduce, uh, the, to fit within the offered funding award is, uh, fifteen percent, so, sorry, there is a fifteen percent match. Um, that will be part of the city. Um, the work will be forty-four curb ramps, twenty crosswalks at eight intersections, um, which will currently, uh, do not meet the ADA requirements. Uh, the one thing is that all work must be completed by the end of two thousand twenty-four. So it is something that we need to this is also part of the six-year transportation improvement plan. Um, and it was also part of the self-evaluation phase of the A transition plan. So, um, we basically came up to these ADA ramps because they were the, the worst. They were, as far as compliance, and they're most of them are around the school area. And so that's where we're going to start. Um, this is obviously the first first phase of it as we continue going forward and we get more money awarded than we can continue working on based on the worst intersections.
All right, questions for Mr. Sanchez? Bad Deputy Mayor.
So who determined that these, uh, intersections or these ramps were the worst?
That was based on the, uh, ADA transition, uh, work that, uh, the city and HLA had been working with together. Um, after doing a self-evaluation and looking at those intersections based on pedestrian use, those were the worst because they don't meet ADA compliance, but they have a lot of traffic um, as far as with the school.
So if I
Go ahead.
Actually, I, I took a walk with Micah Geary. He's in, he's in a wheelchair, and then I walked downtown, you know, a few blocks. And my questions to him were, you know, you look at these other, these other ramps on Sixteenth and, and they have ramps, right? They, they, they have them there, but there's a lot of other sidewalks that don't have ramps. So my question is just, you know, shouldn't we tackle those first? Um, I mean, I, there's, there's one near the hospital that has no ramp and, and it goes on to the, the memorial there, right? So you know, they're coming out of the hospital, they want to go to the memorial, they're in a wheelchair, there's no ramp. Um, the same with, uh, the fire department. Uh, they have a ramp there, but the other three corners don't have any ramps, so it's kind of the sidewalk to nowhere, you know? So I, I would just, you know, want, want to see if, if it's possible to relook at these and, and spend the money where we actually need it, and now when, where we have the ramps already.
Well, we, we have ramps, like you're saying, so the self-ass, uh, evaluation that we did was throughout the whole city. And you're right, throughout the whole city, there's And you're right, throughout the whole city, there's sections where we don't have ramps or they don't meet compliance. But the reason that these came to be was because, like you said, in some areas, we do have pedestrians, obviously any sidewalk, well, that's what it's for. But based on the amount of foot traffic, especially around the schools is because. There is a lot of usage there, that's why we decided to start with those. Um I know what you're saying as far as other areas, either they don't have it. Um but because those right there, um when you, let's say you took a. A traffic count, they would be the highest usage and so therefore the probability of. Um just because of usage, that's why we started to with these right here. Um but yeah, we can, you know, take it back to HLA and decide to, you know, reevaluate it. But as far as for the reason coming to this one, is because they, obviously around the schools, is every day. There is hundreds of kids that are using it. Versus another intersection where, you're right, um there is being usage, but the percentage is a lot less.
Ms. Frousta.
Yeah, is there um, uh Mr. Sanchez, is there like an exhibit where we can see? Um when we're talking about compliance, like I live right across the street from Sixteenth. So I'm just picturing some of these ramps, like where are they now and where do we want them to be, what? So I'm just trying to picture the improvements that are needed in order to meet compliance. Um i- is there like any, um I don't know, like a diagram or or something that we can take a look at so we can visualize exactly what we're aiming?
Yeah, so we don't, I don't have anything with me right now, but the, so there is ramps, the part is that they don't meet the ADA ramp. Compliance standards up to to date, so um. But back in the day, obviously ramps were done differently, so right now they have to meet a certain slope. Um they have to be in certain dimensions in order to meet that ADA compliance. And even with streets that are actually not that old, that have new sidewalk, do not meet that ADA compliance. Um just for example, going across the sidewalk from towards the street, they have to be at around a one. Point five percent slope, anything outside of that, then they're not in compliance, although to the eye. They don't look like, you know, in in some, you could be a lo- above two percent, you don't see it. But it's out of compliance, uh same with the slope going in um towards either whether um. To the, to the, some also are are crosswalks, it's not just the ramp, others are the actual. Uh crosswalk, they either don't have markings, which in some of these will be markings. Um and so again, going back to the schools is just based on the amount of. Pedestrians that are using those. Crosswalks and. Um ramps.
Okay, I I, yeah, thank you for that, it it I understood. Um I hadn't done a walkthrough like you Deputy Mayor, um on other parts of of the community. Um but if there are, if there is any other areas in in dire need or that maybe we can prioritize. Um some more, did you say you went across Sixth Street around?
I was uh around Sixth Street, the fire department.
That's pretty busy.
Over there by Pepe's, there's, there's lack of ramps over there. So I I had something else, um I looked.
Ms. Hart would like to ask a question or two, you go ahead.
Um I just wanted to say, you know, you got about several thousand children and their parents. Using uh Sixteenth Street, which is where most of the uh ADA compliance is is going in. You have kids in wheelchairs, you have parents with canes, you have all of those different things and you have thousands and thousands of kids. Using that two or three times a day, correct? But isn't there, don't we also have in play as part of our six-year street plan? The rest of some of these streets that we know need to have ADA uh compliance, aren't we working on that as well?
Yes.
Or can we?
Yes, and this is part of that, but because we only received five hundred thousand, this is what. We were able to afford to do at this point, um we're gonna match obviously that with eighty-eight thousand, that's coming out of our TBD fund. Um but yes, we asked for a million to do more intersections, but the award was for five hundred thousand. So this is, yeah.
So my question is, it's not that we're neglecting the other obvious uh. Needed ADA changes, it's just kind of a priority system.
Correct, so we started with, again, looking at the worst also and also based prioritizing based on usage. So that's what we're looking at, so when we took at the schools being the most used. And they're out of compliance, that's the reason we started with that section, and then obviously at the next. Uh phase of it, when. We go through the next step, then we would take the worst. Based on usage as well, which you're right, it could be in the downtown area, it could be some of those, but also thinking about usage. Um until we can get through through all of it.
Thank you.
So yes, there, I mean, we we have, yes, hundreds of of intersections that are out of compliance.
Okay, thank you.
Mister Deputy Mayor, you had another question?
Yeah, so I I I found this Y V cog, um some improvements around the valley. And I found one line that says for two thousand twenty-five uh Sixteenth Street improvements, um you know, planning existing asphalt and paved with hot. You know, mixed asphalt, construct eighty-eight sidewalk ramps. Is is that different from this? It is different, right? So if 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 we have it planned with Y V cog, Y V cog has it planned, I just. I don't see why we should be on Sixteenth Street and we let, we let it happen in two thousand twenty-five.
It it's different pots of money, this is, this pot of money, we have to use now and we've applied for it now. Some of those ones on Sixth Street are already part of that plan to get replaced in twenty twenty-five. So if we don't apply for, if if we fix them. If we, if we wait until twenty twenty-five, sure, we could do that and use that pot of money and forego this po- pot of money, is that what you're saying? Hmm. Cause that money that's for twenty twenty-five, we're not gonna get it before then, unless the Transportation Improvement Board or or not the Transportation, the. What's it called? The Y V Cogs Board that selects those programs, sometimes somebody will drop out and they'll, they'll reprioritize. I wish Stephanie was here, cause she knows exactly what, the word, the acronyms I'm trying to come up with in my head right now. Um but they they go through Valleywide and they prioritize those based on the money that's here, so sometimes one jurisdiction will drop out. And then they can move us up based on the funding pot, um but what, when those are set by. By um drive, that's what it's called, I think, right? Or is it?
Yeah, I think it's drive.
I can't remember.
Yeah.
Anyway.
Y V cog.
They they are constantly looking at that and reprioritizing them.
So they they already have plans for Sixteenth Street?
Correct, no, for, that one's Sixth.
What section of of Sixteenth though?
Yeah.
Uh it doesn't say.
Because I mean, there's, it could be north of sixteen of Y V H. Um so yes, um unless there's a an actual between what streets it's referring to. Uh it could be south of Lincoln, um.
It just says Sixteenth Street improvements, yeah.
Yeah, so it's a di- but it is again, a different pot of money.
So, yeah, because for example, even Lincoln, um you have Pioneer and all that, and the reason we did not. Um add that on this one is because we're also looking at um Lincoln as another. Section of improvements that we want to do, um but because of under that. We, again, kind of like the way you're thinking about it is, if we're gonna be doing that work under a different program, then we don't wanna do anything with it now. Because it'll be addressed under a different project. When, when we go to uh do something with Lincoln.
Mr. Mayor, is, I'm sorry.
Ms. Frousta had a question.
Okay.
Okay, I'll just be fasted, I think I kind of lost my train of thought, but um I guess what I was gonna ask uh was, this project you said would. Start when and end when?
It needs to be completed by the end of twenty twenty-four.
Okay.
So obviously this right here, after today, if um you know, we went. Got a resolution to continue, we would start this project as soon as. Possible.
Soon as possible, okay, and um. So we were allocated, I'm just trying to understand the process, but we were un- allocated the five hundred thousand dollars. And then we're gonna match that.
Eh yes, we're gonna, well, we're not gonna, yeah, we're we're not matching it, but we are, uh our percentage is fifteen percent, which is.
Eighty.
Eighty-eight thousand two hundred and thirty-five, which is coming out of the TBD fund.
Okay, okay, and then with the rest of the money, we're gonna then move to look at different areas that need some ADA. Improvements or um or how much I, um are we having any money left over, I guess is where I'm trying to get at?
No, this this money right here, according.
All gonna be allocated.
According to the uh estimates from uh the engineers would do forty-four curb ramps, twenty crosswalks. At eight intersections.
Okay, okay.
But this also includes in there the uh engineering design and construction design.
Okay, thank you, I'm just trying to kind of walk it through my head, thank you.
Keep in mind, council too, that we've always got a long-term plan of updating and, excuse me, and bringing into compliance as much as possible. Um all aspects of our our city, and so ADA is one of those that has been on our radar for a long time. When we did the Sixth Street improvements, all those intersections were brought up into compliance and and as Mr. Sanchez said, that by now they're out of compliance again. Because they made some incremental changes and there's adjustments that have to be made, but we've got miles and miles and miles of sidewalks and all sorts of intersections that. Aren't even close to compliance and we really want to try to improve those, so um. That's kind of where we're coming from here, it's just a long-range plan and we we can't cover all of them at once, it's just be overwhelming, so. Mr. Galvane, you had a question?
Yeah, just touched on a little bit of that, about that, I I know we can't cover them all at once, but I think we should. Start with the ones that don't have a ramp right now, cause I mean, I I asked five different people, you know, randomly, you know, hey, anything wrong with the ramps on sixteen? No, I mean, if we we start throwing money into those, into those ramps there. They're gonna think we're not doing our job, right? I mean, we need to, we need to spend the money where. Elsewhere, I mean, yeah, maybe later on we could come back to those ramps and and bring them up to compliance, maybe that's why Y V cog, you know, has that on the list. But just think we need to think about this a little bit more.
Um I I understand what the council's saying, my concern is, I'm not a hundred percent sure on this, but typically. When we apply for the money, it's with the plans already in place, so I think if we were to change our minds right now, we're gonna need to go back to HLA and find out for sure. Um but whether or not we have other intersections that we have plans available to apply for. This funding, cause it is, it's a, it's grant funding, so. When they initially do that application for that grant, usually they already have all of that planned out, so foregoing. What is in place, and I'm not saying we can't do that, but maybe we should just push it back to the next meeting so we can get more information for you guys. You know what I'm saying?
If, yeah, again, it's 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 council's decision here, so I mean, we, like I said, we went through and did an ADA. Evaluation of the whole city, um before we we came to, you know, that's what guided us to. The worst base, yes, there are some where we either, there is no ramp or there is no, but based on traffic. You know, they, it just, even though eh we may not even have a ramp versus having a ramp that's out of compliance. But based on usage, may not be much traffic, there may be, you know, three, four pedestrians a day. Versus thousands because of the kids that were every day, a few times a day, they're they're they're, they're using it. And so that's what also is determining priority versus, yes, there is a ramp, but it's out of compliance. So versus one, not at all, but very little usage. So we, but again, I mean, it's it's as as a council as a whole, um you guys tell me what you want and and we'll. We know, we 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 would just have to reroute it.
I have a question.
Ms. Sanchez.
Has it recently been out of compliance or do you know when this happened?
Well, it's all different.
Okay.
It's all different based on, so what we're looking, again, just going on what the recent um requirement to be in compliance is. And everything that, when they went through and 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 did the the evaluation, everything that was outside of that. So some of them, yes, it could have been in the last ten years, others could have been for twenty, thirty years, it just, yeah, they all vary, but. It's just they're out of compliance.
Ms. Hart.
Um just as a cu- curiosity too, sometimes with. Just like anything else, regulations surrounding some of these um different requirements. Um just like with electrical or um other kinds of permitting. But ADA is one of those, doesn't it also every now and then go through it, like we need to really. Change the out, the elevation, or we need to change the material. Uh to make it easier to use wheelchairs or those motorized scooters. Is that what you're talking about as far as kinds of things that when they go out of, out of compliance?
Well, yeah, I I mean, according to to Wash Dot, once those regulations that they update and they make those changes. Then, yeah, at one point, that was probably sufficient, but as as those changes have been made. Then you are out of compliance, so uh. Especially when you're also um looking at government funding, those are some of the requirements too that they're gonna. Make sure that you're doing, because again, it's the new. Regulations, and so um. After doing the self-assessment, that's, that's how we came and to the conclusion of, you know, starting with the schools, just because. Of the um, the amount of traffic on the sidewalk, um when you look at the whole city, that probably has the most. Usage every day.
Can I just ask a follow-up?
Question, ask your question, then we need to move on, we got two more.
I know, we got a couple, couple more things here, but just one more question now, when um Mr. Deputy Mayor said something to the effect that there's more. Work to be done on Sixteenth, is that north Sixteenth where the other schools are, do you think that that's where that project is? Cause there's a lot of kids out that way too, and there's not a lot of sidewalks.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure uh what.
Cause we don't know what what that Sixteenth is, okay, nevermind, we'll get back to that one then, we gotta move on.
Probably be handy to know what that one is, so that's a a lot of questions to ask, you know, it might not be a bad idea to move that one back to a later meeting. But we can uh definitely discuss that in the regular meeting, got two more items that came up. Uh Freight Mobility Investment Board Funding Application, discuss a resolution authorizing the city manager to submit a funding application to the Freight Mobility. Strategic Investment Board for improvements to exit sixty-nine, Mr. City Manager.
I believe this again is Mr. Sanchez.
Mr. Sanchez.
Okay, so this one, um what I'm asking for here, um as far as the six-year Freight Mobility Strategic. Investment program is for a uh roundabout. That would be um at the exit of sixty-nine, um as you can see in that exhibit there. Um it is uh part of the um T-one route. Um which is exit um Interstate eighty-two and then Highway two forty-one is considered a uh T-two route. So what we'd be bringing up here is just uh to submit an application for the funding for that. Um the match would be coming out of the uh. Um some of the uh developments that are going in, which one of them right now has eighteen percent. Already um set aside for this, so that would cover the city's match. Um so really, it wouldn't cost the city anything. Um and so what we're looking for here is uh just to um. Approval to add the uh, to uh submit an application for this project.
Questions, comments for Mr. Sanchez? Mr. Galvane.
So the cess fee of eighteen percent of uh, that's, that's what you're trying to. Assess, right, the new property over there, the the, what is it, the apartment complex?
It would be the uh, yeah, that's going on.
Are these new fees or are these fees that are already on 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 the books that we would be getting these fees anyway?
These are fees that we started based on a, on a uh traffic analysis that's been done and impact. Um so that it doesn't go back on the uh taxpayer here, so we're trying to capture those fees based on on. Developments that are gonna be af- affecting uh creating a traffic.
So is it a new fee, um it's been in place to?
No, this is, so this is a, this is more or less what we call pro-rata share. So whenever there is a jurisdiction that has some sort of project in the works and we, and we knew that Wash Dot had some projects. In the works, especially along um sixty-nine, um the the exit right there. Um we will, we will ask for, we have a a city policy where we ask for. Especially when there are traffic generating developments, we'll ask them to submit a traffic impact analysis. And through that traffic impact analysis, we can kind of deduce what their pro-rata share of the of the overall. Their their contribution would be for the. Their their contribution would be for the projects that uh Wash Dot wants to put into place. So this is a two million dollar project, so the pro rata share was kind of deduced out of that traffic impact analysis when they went through it.
So we have to use those towards that project?
Yes.
Only?
Yeah, yep, yep. Can't use them towards anything else. Or we can, but it's it'd be tricky. Um, so we have to have a project in the works. If we're gonna collect pro rata shares, we have to have a project in the works. And they have to be applied to an applicable project.
And so as you can see up there, our match would be thirteen four point five percent, but we have eighteen percent uh. Of the roundabout.
Other questions?
Nobody does.
I don't see, don't see any hands up. Mister Deputy Mayor, it's all you.
Um, I was also looking at uh Highway two forty one. You have it under a T two. I I went on the website and um, they actually have it under T three. So does does that matter?
Well, um, yeah, it probably would. Um, that one is the uh Edison Bridge. That is um. We're looking also under a different funding is to replace that um, that Edison Bridge that's there uh coming out to two forty one.
Okay, but but on this here being that two forty one meets, you know, Highway eighty two there. Do we need to update that uh reflect the T three instead of the T two?
Um, I'll ask uh HLA. Um, but um, that one, uh, we're not asking for anything at this point, um, other than um. I'll I'll get clarity on that.
And also, and I I was looking at their webinar that they had in March twenty six, uh, video that I saw. And they have it split up into four different items, right? So they have asset prevention and safety, improvement, existing systems. Expanding existing sys- systems or future freight systems. Do we know which category we this project would fall under?
Um, once the application gets filled out at this point, I'm not sure what they're planning on. Yep, what that category would be.
And keep in mind, this is just a resolution to to fill out an application. So this is just applying for the.
Yeah.
But once we approve this, they fill it out and they send it out.
Correct. They will send out the application.
I just.
But they can definitely look forward and get clarification on the classification of the highway, whether it's T two or two three or T three and. You know, see what difference that makes on the uh, on the application. Ms. Ralston.
Would it be a good idea, and this could be a collective decision, of course, to go back to HLA and you know, talk about the, you know, the ADA issue um. And um, or the project that we're trying to to uh figure out and and the different streets and. And then bring this back to them. And could they come back next week? So we can ask them some more questions around this and some just some more clarifying points. I wish they were here today, actually. Um, and it would be great if any of these projects weren't being introduced to council. They could be here during that time, so maybe we can deliberate a little bit more.
Sure, at the, well, not next week, but the week after that, I think.
Or, yeah.
Yeah.
They've been meeting every week.
Yep, yep. We can, we can get those uh questions answered at that point.
Yeah, it'd be great. Yeah.
Ms. Vasquez, you were starting to raise your hand?
No, I was gonna say something very similar to Councilor.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Ms. Horner.
I just want to say the the ADA. Project was brought to you guys on the second meeting of February and that's when Stephanie Ray was here and she talked about that one and why they picked the particular um. Intersections that they picked. So I think that's probably one of the reasons that they didn't come because. It it has been introduced to you at that time. I don't know for sure, but we can definitely try and get her here at the next one.
One thing we want to keep in mind is you see the highlighted on the screen there, must be submitted by five P M on April nineteen. That's uh, that's next week. So there's a little bit of urgency here on getting this approved if we're going to.
This application would, yeah, would have to be submitted for the next council meeting.
Is there any initial costs like the ADA? Because I know we already spent money with HLA doing their, you know, research and whatnot. Is there addition, you know? Starting cost, I guess, before we even know if we if we were approved or 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 we.
Or.
For this project here?
At this point, it's just an application.
Just an application.
Just to fill out an application, submit it. We don't even know if we would, you know. I mean, this is just to apply for and see where we go from there as far as funding goes. This is just an application.
All right, guys, we are at uh five minutes before our next meeting starts. Excuse me. So we're gonna need to adjourn this. I think we can handle the uh item G. The Climate Resilience Advisory Team during the regular meeting if there's no objection. That's me. All right, so there are not being any further business and us having reached our time limit, um, this particular meeting is adjourned at six twenty five P M. And we'll be back in session at six thirty.